Okay.
They're all set.
Please announce yourself.
I'm Ethan Patrick.
Okay, welcome to the June 23 Selectmen's Meeting. I'd like to call the Board, the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Don Klein, present.
Wayne Miller, present. May you join in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Mr. Martin. Karen Clement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Now, it's the meetings being recorded and we are remotely by phone. Thank you for everybody on the phone that's joined. 1.3 Chairman's additions, deletions. We have one, I believe, right?
We do. 3.11, which will be consideration of the recommendation of the water commissioners regarding the vacant position of superintendent.
Emily Austin runs 30 Beet Street.
Okay. All right, let's get right into it. So, 2.1 Recreation Commission reopening plan. We've seen that. Got a copy of it. Emily, I heard you were on. Is Emmy on too?
I am.
Okay. Hi, guys.
Can you hear me?
Yep. You're fine. So Jim or Emmy, I don't know who wants to go over this, but...
Well, we have an elected Recreation Commission. They put this plan together after a lot of work by Emmy. So Emmy, I think the document pretty much speaks for itself. We can get it loaded on the website as an addendum to the reopening plan if it meets the Boards of Selectmen's approval. So I don't know if members have any questions for Emmy.
No, it's pretty substantial. Emmy, my one question, Emmy, is where is this going to be?
Isn't that a fun question?
Yes, it is.
So, the, yes. And so the hope is that it's going to be on Hawthorne Brook. That's what we originally contracted for. They had, the school committee was requesting professional cleaners. And with our conversation with the Board of Health, as well as looking at the protocols the state has put out, and for schools, et cetera, we developed to do daily fogging with a professional cleaning company, safety company. And I posed that to Brad Morgan. And he said he was waiting on the Board of Health, in which I spoke to Rick last week and gave him all the specs on the fogging. And that was a go for them. So whether or not we are able to have it is whether or not you guys say yes, and then whether or not the school says yes. So this is actually a two-pronged. You guys are the first because you are our governing body. And then from there, the school would need to make the decision whether or not they're going to allow us to use Hawthorne Brook.
Okay. The only question I had was temperature checks?
Right. So those were removed from the Massachusetts Child and Youth Serving Programs reopen approach.
Okay.
And my understanding from my research into that is because they're so all over the place, they tend to be extremely unreliable. So the minimum requirements for health and safety is changed it all to screening with questions.
Okay.
So, and then looking for signs throughout the day. Symptoms, I guess you could say, throughout the day.
Okay. The only other thing, and this is kind of another question for Town Hall reopening too, is contact testing or tracing to make sure that we have that for the kids and the parents and, you know, whoever's coming in contact with us.
Absolutely.
Just so we have a record.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the big things that I spoke about with Rick, and one of the reasons they're keeping the group or cohort sizes small is so that we can contact trace. It's also another reason why we're going to keep, we keep the same staff with that same group. So if Staff A is working with Group Number One on Monday, they have to work with them on Wednesday and Friday also. You can't shift around. But our registrations require already all of the detailed information of the child and the parents. We're also going to be requiring two emergency contacts for, you know, if they need to be picked up. But we'll have all of that information from our sign-in, as well as from the daily sign-in on who's here, who's not, and in which cohort. So in the event, God forbid, anything does happen, then the show the Board of Health will have the exact people that were in contact for those exact periods of time.
Okay, perfect. Those are the questions I had. Don, did you have any?
No, those are the two questions that I had. The only other thing is I noticed that we have, they have to wear their mask. And I'm assuming that the staff is going to ensure that the kids keep their mask on as long as they're in the program?
Right. So the mask, again, they change that a little bit around too. So the mask, it's staffing, obviously, and kids within that six-foot different distance. And if they cannot maintain that six-foot distance, masks are required. They have some, there's language in there for children that are unable to, if it becomes a safety issue because they're touching or tugging, there's medical issues. But yes, the, basically, it says, "Program should encourage the wearing of masks or cloth face coverings during the program day. Whenever six feet of physical distancing is not possible, masks must be worn." So that is how we're going to run the program. Our goal is to keep most of our groups, most of our cohorts outside for most of the day, and as much as we possibly can. The gym is what we're looking for from Hawthorne Brook, and we're looking at only 36 kids for our program this year. So the gym is more than large enough to keep our children plenty of distance and the cohorts from the distances easily. So it's going to be vigilance on our part and staff reminders and encouragement to just make sure that we're keeping the kids masked when they need to be, staff as well.
Okay. So what do we need to do, Jim?
Just, yeah, adopt, approve, take your choice. The submitted Townsend Recreation Youth Program Protocol reopening 2020.
Okay. Don, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the Youth Program Protocol reopening for 2020 for the Townsend Red Committee.
And I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, I'm all favor to it. So all in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thank you, Emmy and your staff.
Thanks, Em.
Good job.
Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
No problem. All right, 2.2 Council on Aging reopening plan.
You do have in your packets, I found mine actually stapled to the back of the Townsend Water Department Public Rate Increase. So somehow it got jammed up into the wrong spot in the packets, but there is a three-page document that comes in from Council on Aging as well. It is limited to staff only and not open to the public. So you'll see that there is a schedule of staggered operation hours for folks, a schedule for the van service by day and by service type, requiring calling in. Any activity is going to be logged through my senior center, so they'll have their contact tracing handled through my senior center. And there is the, they mirror the same protocols that we have for the overall opening plan for safety and hygiene protocols on pages two and three.
So similar, just they're not having people in?
Correct. Expanding the services a little bit and bringing the staff back into ramp for the next phase.
Okay. So just a question, would Phase Three be the reopening of bringing people in, or is it Phase Four?
Take, the phasing is, I mean, we're technically, this is our Phase One reopening plan, we're still functioning, even though Phase Two, now Three, Phase 2.2, I guess?
2.2.
2.2 is before us. So the expectation is in July, when we open to the public, they'll be moving towards opening to the public. There is a document in your packets as well from the, or there might have been, from the library as well, and they're looking at a July 7 start to a soft reintroduction of the public. So we're all targeting that same first week of July.
Okay. And capacity limitations as well?
Absolutely.
Restaurants, okay.
Yeah. I mean, for instance, in this building, you may have seen some of the, if you were in today, we had a crew in here doing the wiring on the intercom and door strike system. So that system is going to be next to the keypad when you walk in the entrance downstairs. It's been amended a little bit, instead of being just one or two buttons hosted by two offices, putting them really in the place of being receptionists and, not particularly as fair. There'll be five. There'll be one that'll be Board of Health building. If you have business with them, you hit that button, it rings in that space, you communicate directly. One for treasurer, collector, assessor, the finance team right there. One for land use, one for the town clerk alone, and then one for Selectment Administrator.
Okay.
So people will be able to get directly to the location instead of, you know, Janet getting in the building office, having a call and see if there are people available in land, I mean, it just, it'll make it a little easier. It is fractional increase in cost to actually upgrade to the five keypad.
Okay.
So they're actually installing that. They started today, so we'll have that online by the end of the week.
Any questions from you?
No.
Karen, anything to add if you're on?
I didn't hear that.
I don't think she came on, so I'm fine with it. So I can get a motion to do the same?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the reopening plan for the Townsend Senior Center.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
No, yes. 3.1 Appoint Jay Sartell Chief of Police, Keeper of the Lockup, and Agent for Licensing Authority. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we appoint Jay Sartell as the Chief of Police, the Keeper of the Lockup, and the Agent for Licensing Authority in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 35, for a one-year term effective July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
And I'll second that. So this is just the standard formality? I mean, the next set of motions is just the annual reapprunts?
Annual reappoints.
Okay. Any questions, Don?
Nope.
Me either? All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the Board, you could take 3, 2, 3, 3, 3, 4, 3, 5, 3, 6, 3, 7 as a consent and as printed on the agenda. Because they've all been listed publicly, there wouldn't be the need to read them all, so you could do that as one motion if you choose.
Yes, that's what we did last year, and there's no need to read all this thing. So unless you're so inclined, Don, that we need to go through each of these?
No. So it's all the same section, right? So I just need to read it for one time?
Yep.
I make a motion that we appoint as printed in the agenda the following police departments in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 97A, for a one-year term effective July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
To make a, I think you just need to make a motion from 3, 2 to 3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
7?
3, 2 to 3, 7.
Yeah, to include line items 3.2 through 3.7.
And I'll second that. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
No, this is just regular, same thing?
It's just for people following at home, this is a list of all the area police departments and public safety employees, law enforcement personnel that have reciprocal powers to respond within the community.
Just, yeah, I do have one question. I just noticed it.
Yep.
I didn't see either Ashby or Lunar. We don't have a reciprocal agreement with them?
To my knowledge, we do, so perhaps it's just not ready for processing yet. I can check first thing with the chief.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. That cuts out a big chunk of the stuff. 3, 8. Appoint Jane Jackson and Linda Duratt Townsend Culture Council. Make a motion on that, please.
Yes, I make a motion that we appoint Jane Jackson and Linda Duratt to the Townsend Cultural Council effective July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
And I'll second that. Any discussion, Don?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3, 9 Appoint Victoria Brunel, Dolores Farsom, and Janet Johnson as members of the Townsend Emergency Management Agency. Can I get a motion there, please?
I make a motion that we appoint Victoria Brunel, Dolores Farsom, Janet Johnson as members of the Townsend Emergency Management Agency for a term effective July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023.
And I'll second that. Any discussion there?
Nothing there.
Okay. Myself included, so all is in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3, 10 Appoint Shirley Coit Director of TMA. Can I get a motion there, please?
I make a motion to appoint Shirley Coit as the Director of the Townsend Emergency Management Agency for a term effective July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023.
And I'll second that as well. Any discussion there?
None.
Thank you, Shirley, for doing it again. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3, 1, 1 Water Commissioner Discussion that we added.
Mr. Chairman, you should have each received an email last evening from Mr. Melanson, member of the Board of Water Commissioners, regarding the commission's interest in the Select Board taking this matter up this evening. This is the vacant superintendent, water superintendent position. The commission has met last evening and came to consensus on a recommendation of a candidate and wanted you to take it up this evening. So Kenneth Good is the candidate. His information had been forwarded this morning from Brenda in the office, so you should each have received a copy of his resume.
Yep.
So it's before you for your consideration. The one caveat that was contained in the email, and I've had the opportunity to speak to both of you about briefly today, independent of one another, is that the salary that was being discussed, if not offered, by the Board of Water Commissioners to the candidate exceeds the salary that is contemplated in the Compensation and Classification Plan that was just completed by the Collins Center. This presents, presents an issue of concern for you to think about and work your way through. We, back in March, when the posting was first going up, Mr. Melanson, on behalf of the commission, had asked for what the likely range was going to be for the salary. And the Collins Center provided me information that I forwarded along and copied both of you on as well, that the range would likely be coming in around $65,000 to $85,000. The plan that you adopted under consideration, not for implementation, but under consideration, came back at that $65,000 to $85,000 just two weeks ago. The number that's at play with the commissioners right now is equal to a number that they submitted in their budget, which is $100,000. So as I think everybody around the table and those that have been following along know, the Select Board are the ones that are empowered statutorily and by our charter to make decisions on personnel matters for all employees, including those of the Water Department. So the last point I'll offer is that it's a union position. And in that regard, there may be union discussions that would need to take place regarding what rate the position is being brought in at, given the fact that we have an old comp and class plan that the position was subject to. That pay rate is recognized in the back of the contract. We have a new comp and class plan that's not yet been fully endorsed or accepted, implemented. And then...
Mr. Chair, can I ask the Town Administrator to speak up? I can't hear him.
Is this Todd?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Yeah, he can't hear you, that's all.
Did you get any of it, Todd?
Not much of it. I, I got that, that we put Ken, Kevin Good, that his, the salary that we talked about is above the range that the Matrix proposed, but that's about it. Did you mention that you did, you did, you did come to a Water Commissioners meeting and said, "We could propose or do a salary above the Matrix if it was in our budget to do so," correct?
I think consistent with what you wrote last night, Todd, that using the comp and class plan as the guidance, yes, you guys could budget whatever you thought was appropriate.
Okay. It's just, I, I, the Matrix itself, having looked around and talked to the superintendents of Mass Water Works, that isn't a going salary for a superintendent, and not that what needs to be done. And that's kind of why we, we put the salary where we did, so we could get a proper candidate. And we've got one that, I will be very honest with you, is hit every, every checkmark that we wanted in a superintendent to be able to do. He's got an extensive experience, both small and large systems. In his current job now is Circuit Rider for Granite State. He does a lot of measuring of young and new water operators, which we desperately need, I think. He has a wealth of knowledge on long-term planning, budgeting, regulatory compliance. You couldn't have had a better candidate fall into our lap than, I really hope you take that into consideration. And I appreciate being able to speak.
Okay. Thanks, Don.
On that point, Todd, if I might, I couldn't agree more with his qualifications. When I saw his resume this morning, it's everything you just said and more. I guess, I guess I'm...
And he's more, Jim, he's more impressive in person.
Sure. Now, when look at...
Well, I haven't met him in person, I've only met him digitally, but, but...
Right, right. When looking at the advertisement, Todd... Yeah, I was just saying, I was just saying, when looking at the advertisement, I noticed that you guys didn't put a salary in the ad. So how did, how did the candidates come to understand $100,000 figure?
That was a discussion with, well, Becky, actually, I think, when she set up or helped us set up the budget, the thing, I don't know how much I can say about that in open meeting, Jim. Can you direct me?
Well, if it's, I mean, she submitted, she submitted a budget that you guys voted for that has $100,000 as the requested amount for the position. So that's public, so we can, so we can say that.
And that, okay. I thought, actually, I thought it went, I thought she submitted one that was higher for the salary. But that's, that's kind of what, it's kind of what all the ones that we picked as final candidates were looking at, to be honest with you. And, you know, the best I can say is that's, that's kind of what the, if you look, if you go on, for systems our size, on like Mass Municipal, or you look at New England Water Works or Mass Water Works, when they start looking at a superintendent, and you're not looking for a working superintendent. He has the qualifications to be in the hole, but that's what we have a foreman for. We're, you know, you're looking for, for a water superintendent that's going to take on a lot of the long-term view and stuff like that. So that is pretty much what the, you know, we, I know she went and did a lot of background research on what we could, and she didn't want to, I mean, it really didn't want to push that envelope further above what the Matrix said. And what we got back from a lot of current superintendents was, that was, that was probably your endpoint. That was where, where you were shooting for. And that's how we came up with it. Is that good enough?
I think I understand what you're saying. You know, the, the purpose behind the comp and class plan was to have somebody that's not me or, or you or anyone in town, look at comparable communities and look at what the current data says.
Then I don't know where they, then I don't know where they looked, because every superintendent I've talked to, in fact, both interim superintendents, the first thing they said was, one was, they were very, very concerned about the sustainability of the budget, and that we weren't, we weren't, the pay scale for a superintendent was not what it should be. And those were some of the most glaring problems they saw, both of them. And that's, that's kind of how we ended up where we ended up. I, I'll be honest with you, I really, I don't know their depth of experience in water, but I can't, as a water person, and a member of Mass Water Works, having, being availed of a lot of people's experience well beyond mine, I don't know how they came up with that number, to be honest with you, Jim. And I, I'll be very honest with you, I don't agree with it.
Yeah. I could tell you the communities that were determined to be comparable communities. I don't have the data set with me. I could get it in just a moment if, if people thought there was value in that. But I know they're, they're regional communities, and then only communities within that subset that had like positions. So, you know, you wouldn't find a community necessarily that had a DPW where the person was responsible for water sewer...
Correct.
You know, a highway, cemeteries, and the whole like. So again, absent going and grabbing the list, I know best recollection Lancaster was one, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
And I would have liked to have asked them questions before they came up with that final number about how long that superintendent has been there. Because when you have a lot of older ones, especially in these smaller systems that started god knows how long ago, that's, when they have to go get a new superintendent, you're going to see them with a drastically different number. And, you know, if you look at Groton, you know, you look at Groton, I can't call Pepper because that's a DPW. If you go to Westford, you go to Acton, which is a district, probably of comparable size to us, what you're looking at is drastically different. And to get a candidate to do what we need to do, this is, this is what you're, what everyone has told us would be a reasonable salary to do.
Don, right, obviously, we haven't talked about this because it just came up yesterday, so I'd like to get your thoughts.
I said it on the meeting, I haven't had a chance to look at the applicant's resume. Again, I haven't seen the data behind, behind what the recommendations are. And I don't know enough about water to step in and say, one way or the other, whether we're in the ballpark. But I hate, I hate to go above and beyond our, the recommendations without some facts behind it to say why we need to increase that, if that's the case. But at the same time, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, but I think last night it was stated that the gentleman in question already has another job offer, but this is the one he prefers. But he's not, he's not going to wait long.
No, and that's kind of my...
No, he's not.
And that's my little bit of sense of urgency on this thing, since I did review his resume, and I agree with Todd, he's exactly what I would expect them to choose. Again, deferring to the Water Commissioners, that's their job to choose the candidate and compensation, what's in their budget. I, I am leaning heavily towards saying yes to get it, get the candidate, because it's been an open position for quite some time, and we need to start moving forward on some of these things.
So, so the other question I have, and I'm sorry, but I meant to ask this last night before my computer died and I had to leave, but this being a union position, doesn't this have to be accepted? Even if we decide to go at a higher rate, doesn't the union have to agree to it? the union have to agree to it? And what, what's the outcome? Because they're going to ask for something. I, I know that.
Right. I, I don't believe the union has an absolute right to oppose it. Because while there is a, a comp and class plan that is referenced in the pay scale, currently the old one, the position is vacant. And the new comp and class plan exists, but has not yet been negotiated in. So I think there's, there's a fair argument that could say, this is what it takes in the marketplace to bring in a competent person to fill the position. What are the ripple effects becomes the next question, because we're at the table with the supervisory union. And while we're not going to negotiate an open session like this, it doesn't take, you know, a degree in, in rocket science to figure out that everybody else that's a department head is going to be looking at, not only is there a comp and class plan that says that they're underpaid by some number of dollars that we have taken the position, we're not going to fund right now because we don't know where we are with COVID, but there's somebody that not only is getting what the plan says, but 15 grand more. So it, I mean, I think it can be done.
Jim-
I just think doing it with eyes wide open.
Can I ask you a question about that? Because my, I'll be honest, my, my knowledge of unions and, and stuff like that is, is somewhat limited.
Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
But I, I have a, the question I have is, the superintendent, like, I, I, the supervisory union, I, I know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure who's in it, but I'm going to assume it's like the highway superintendent and some other positions. I almost think waters, I, I, I'm not sure how it got fit in there, but I'm not sure water, you can directly compare them just because of the, the public health component that's, that's drastically different for, for a water, um, person versus some, not to dismiss what they do, but the, the requirements of certification, um, education, and, um, and things like that. I'm not sure it's an apple to apple. So I'm just curious how that all kind came about. And is that, are those, um, justifiable reasons for there to be a difference?
Once, once the positions are certified as being of like classification, which is something done by the Department of Labor in Boston, it doesn't matter. They are then collectively being bargained as a group. So, you know, whether it's a group that contains somebody that has, you know, public safety, or public health, or just public administration as their core function, if they're in the same group certified by the state, you have to have them looked at as one whole when you're negotiating. That doesn't mean that you can't at the table say, we'd like to do something different with X position as opposed to Y position, but that's all part of the negotiation. The, the how it happened, Todd, it predates my employment here. But, um, I know that the, the former superintendent in this position that we're talking about was, was involved in, um, the inception of this supervisory union. So, um, you know, it, it goes back to-
That predates me as well.
To mid, mid 15 was when it was all being done.
Okay.
Good enough. Um, like, you know, I, I, I guess, my experience tells me this is, this, to be honest with you, is the going rate for someone of the position and the experience. Um, we've had the, it's been an open position for a year. Um, the search was not easy to do. Um, and to have this fall on our lap, it's, it's a hard one not to follow through on, I guess, is what I'm going to say.
The, the three communities that were used as the comps, there were seven communities total that the Collins Center used. Only three that had comparable, in their judgment, um, positions when looking at the water superintendent are Groton, Lancaster, and Pepperell. So it's the data for the superintendent salaries in those three communities that was relied upon in determining the grade for this community.
I find it interesting that they use Pepper because Pepper is actually a DPW. Groton, I'd like to know where they got the number, because I happen to know the Groton superintendent and he makes a lot, he makes more than what was the salary range given. Lancaster, I wouldn't, they're maybe comparable in size, but not in, in, um, system. I, I, I would... It's interesting, because I wouldn't have included Pepper in that because it's a DPW. So a lot of the planning and stuff like that isn't on the superintendent, it's on the DPW director. So we're asking this person to do a lot of the long-range planning and the, the final budgeting and administrative duties.
Sure.
Groton, he's similar, I will agree with that, but I don't know the salary. I just know that it's not within the range that, that was given by the Collins. And Lancaster, do you know if they have a, a water enterprise account, Jim?
I do not, no.
I'm not sure they do. And that would be another thing that would take, make that a drastic difference.
Yeah, I guess I would disagree with that, Todd. The, the enterprise funding is only an accountancy tool. It's not a management tool.
Well, it, it, it is in the way that, that the water department is funded. Like Groton is, like, has an enterprise. So if it doesn't have an enterprise, the salary ranges for a superintendent is going to be artificially low because it comes out of the, the general fund in the town budgeting. Water enterprise makes it different a little bit. And so I will respectfully disagree with you on, on that. Um, Groton, I would compare, um, but again, I don't, I would never ask a, a friend for what they make. And again, Pepper, I, I don't know why they included it. So that, that makes an interesting, I wish they had asked. I couldn't give them, them some more comparable communities. Um-
Part, part of the issue with the comp and class plan-
It is what it is.
Yeah. Todd, part of the issue with the comp and class plan is, is trying to find a universe of communities that will apply as much as possible to all of the positions in your community. So it may be that if we were looking at just the water superintendent, there may be, like Acton, you referenced, might be a comparable, or some others. But those, those types of communities are not at all comparable when you look at the underlying criterion that the Collins Center utilizes to determine comparability, like assessed property value, per income, uh, income per capita, those types of things. So there are a number of, of factors that go into determining what's a comparable community. And sometimes it's a great fit for position, sometimes it's not as great a fit, but they, their objective is finding one that fits as, as best as possible over all of the positions.
Okay. Then, so we're trying to fit, uh, basically a square peg to a round hole. And it explains why, what the differences I see as the industry norms versus what came up in the, the, the matrix or, or this, this, this process. It explains it. So how do we, how do we fix it in this one? Because I really don't want to let this guy go. Um, I, I, there's too much that needs to get done. And it, it, it's gone, it, we've eked on as best we can, um, but this needs to be rectified sooner than later. And, and I don't see a better candidate coming along. And, you know, if you stick to that salary range, you're not, we're not going to go in the direction we need to. I, I just don't see it.
Todd, can I ask a question? In, in the process of-
Yes, sir.
A process of interviewing, um, did he come back to you with what would be an acceptable salary range?
Um, I'd have to get back to you with Rebecca on that. I wish, um, she wasn't available to call in tonight. Um, and I'm on my only phone, uh, my cellphone. Um, I think, going back and forth, I think that was, because he's going, he's, he's moving as well. Um, he's moving for his, they're moving to, um, Southern New Hampshire anyways. But, um, this, from what I understood from Rebecca, this was probably the bare minimum or this was what was agreeable to him. But she's not here to speak to that, and I apologize for that.
Um-
But she's, I mean, she's supposed to, via her contract, I think only do 10 hours in, uh, of water department work. And, you know, we're, we're pushing right up against that pretty much every week. So, you know, I don't know if her being here would have, would have bitten into that, but I also know she wasn't available. Um, so-
There, there, there was one other thing that-
I don't know what to tell you. I just know that this search, I, I will reiterate, this search has not been easy. Um, and to get thi- this far and to get someone this qualified, I'm at a loss to say anything other than, than we need this more than anything I can, I could have ever imagined.
There, I had, did have one other question, and I couldn't get it in last night, is that you meant-
We wondered why you dropped out. We thought we said something wrong.
No, my computer crashed on me last night. Um, you meant, I, it was either you or one of the other commissioners mentioned something about perks. And the question I wanted to know was any other perks mentioned to him? Because all of that comes under the union contract.
No, and that, and that was in a previous meeting, Don. And, and that was pretty much, um, he was, I, I think the conversation, it was Nate who was talking about that. And that was pretty, we were pretty much told that that, that would have to be the union part of it. And he knows that. He's actually dealt with unions and been in the union. So he understands a lot of that. It's just the basic salary is what we're talking about right now. The rest of it, he understands will be, will be a new, union negotiated thing.
Okay. So, Jim, what does that leave us to do?
Um, you're prerogative. I mean, you can, there have been instances where you have, for good cause, gone beyond what the salary in the then existing comp plan provided.
Yep.
Town accountant is a great example.
Yep.
When, um, you know, when we were in the market and looking to, to see what we could attract at the earlier salary, we realized that we weren't going to see anything as, as promising as Lori was herself. We were blessed by the fact that she had an interest in coming back to us. Um, you were able to make an offer. Um, that was against a comp and class plan that was about five years old though. So there was an argument that that data was very stale. The same argument can't be made now. So you can choose to do this. It's entirely your choice. I just wanted to be of record as saying there are repercussions because it is a, you know, it's a collective bargaining issue. And, you know, the comp and class plan is as fresh as a couple of weeks.
True.
Well, to, to me, well, first of all, I hate going outside the comp and class plan, but there are extenuating circumstances. And this is one where we absolutely need to get somebody on board. And with, given the qualifications, and I know they went over it last night, and I listened to what Rebecca had to say, um, I'm kind of leaning now to, to go ahead with the offer.
I, I am as well. Um, I'm trusting the water commissioner's judgment as to what the qualifications are and what the, I understand the Collins Center, what they've done. But again, I, I agree, extending circumstances here is something I think we need sooner than later. Um, and it is unlike the other positions in the supervisory union, in my opinion, as far as certification and public safety. So, um, so with that, do we need a motion to?
Absolutely. Um, I, I, I don't imagine that we've had a core check and physical. So any motion you would make, I would suggest you have-
The contingencies.
Um, the, the standard contingencies.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, if you're comfortable, make a motion, please.
I, do you have the gentleman's name? Because I don't have him in front of me.
Kenneth, Kenneth Good. Kenneth Good Jr.
It's a Good or Goody? Does that have a friend?
Good?
Okay.
Kenneth R. Good Jr.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that we, um, approve the recommendation from the Board of Water Commissioners for, give me his name again, sorry. Kenneth?
Kenneth R. Good Jr.
Kenneth R. Good Jr. Um, and at the proposed salary?
Salary, 100.
Uh, 100,000. Um, and that be a contingent upon passing a query and a physical.
And does that have to get approval at town meeting as well?
Well, it's, it's not currently budgeted because we're functioning under last year's budget-
Yes.
In twelfths. Um, union contract is up. So the, the union contract in itself will require ratification at town meeting. So I think there's, there's some gray area there, but, um, they have within their purview, within their line items that they've got to make transfers to cover this if they, if that was their choice. So-
So we don't have to include that?
No.
Okay.
There's also, I mean, I believe there was money left in the superintendent's, um, budget that is still there in the budget that could be moved to cover any initial costs.
Okay.
That, that'll close to your retained earnings next week though, at the end of the fiscal year, Todd.
No, I know.
Um, yeah, the other question I had, I'll second that first. I'm, to make it official. Um, the only other question I had, is this subject to a contract negotiation or?
He, he's in the union, so there's no, there's no individual contract.
All right. I just want to make sure.
The, the posting that the commissioners put out publicly did say it's a union position subject to the union contract. So it, those terms and conditions are all covered.
Okay. So, uh, any other discussion, Don?
No.
Questions? All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Thank, gentlemen, and Jim, thank you very, very much.
Gentlemen, and Jim.
Oh, I didn't mean it to come out that way. I'm sorry.
That was funny though. Thanks, Todd.
There was no intent there. I sincerely apologize.
Thanks, Todd. Have a good night.
Hey, thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Thanks, Todd.
Bye.
Right. 4.1, review approved municipal relief transfer from the treasurer in the amount of 1,500 bucks to wages and salaries. Can I get a motion, please?
Yes. I make a motion that we approve the municipal relief transfer for the treasurer in the amount of $1,500 from account number 001-01-146-5110 slash 5100, treasurer's wages and salaries to account number 001-01-146-5300-0000, professional services.
And I'll second that. And this is just a transfer to cover a contract?
Yeah, contract benefit for the treasurer.
Okay. Any questions, Don?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4-2, reaffirm the approval of Paul Walter working at the recycling center. Can I get a motion there?
Uh, I make a motion that we reaffirm the approval of Paul Walker working at the recycling center.
And I'll second that. Um, are we opening?
They-
Is that part of it?
They, they have, they have been. Uh, they have been open.
Just for yard waste, like, right.
Right. Um, they lost an employee. Um, this is a former employee that was available to come back and help us. Turns out, as former player, also the health administrator's son. So needed, uh, and a quick turnaround, somebody to say, yes, he could do it without her being involved. So I wrote an email, copied you on it, saying that I, I'm approving that now, subject to getting a confirming vote by the Board of Selectmen at their next meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Um, they have a plan, I assume, for the reopening as part of the-
They're, they're working on it. I know that. I've been seeing the emails back and forth about what they're, you know, what they're trying to put together for reopening foe.
Right. I'd be interested to see that. Any questions, Don?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4-3, approve, approve one-year contract for landscaping. Are you motion there?
Uh, I make a motion that we approve a one-year contract for landscaping- Uh, I make a motion that we approve a one-year contract for landscaping services.
CBF Land Works in the amount of 28,525.
Uh, to CBF Land Works Incorporated in the amount of 28, what was it?
525.
525.
And I'll second that. This, this is just for general?
This is Memorial Hall and the Recreation Building, landscaping, central fire headquarters, harbor, fire station, Townsend Police Station, Townsend Senior, Senior Center, Public Library, West Fire Station, and that's for lawn, um, for the beds mulching, um, trimming, um, edging. So basically the full season.
Okay. So this is a one-year?
It is.
Okay. I second that. Questions, Don?
Nope.
Uh, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Yes.
4-4 Discussion update COVID-19 departmental logs.
Couple things, Mr. Chairman. Um, departmental logs. So um, we've, we've worked to get um, copy of ones that have been used in some other communities. So each department, uh, this will go in conjunction with the discussion we had a few moments ago regarding the, the intercom system. When somebody buzzes in and they're looking to go to the treasurer collector's office, they'll be asked their name, um, and their address. So that gets put in the department log. That'll be right at the intercom in each of the office spaces. So if there's a need ever to have any contact tracing done, we'll have a list and a record of everybody that's come into the building.
Okay, good.
Additionally, under COVID updates, um, had some regular communication with the Division of Local Services regarding the COVID CARES funds, the state version. So not the FEMA federal version, but the 25% version that the state.
Yep.
Put on the table. And um, we have received approval for uh, probably 80% of what was submitted. There were a couple of vehicles that were submitted on the long chance that they'd make it through. They, they were not. They were shot down pretty quickly. Um, but things like the intercom system that we're talking about, it's a roughly $11,000 expenditure that's coming in from these CARES funds. So that's all grant money that's coming in from the federal government through the state. Additionally, the cost of having backfilled staff for public safety during the pandemic, those costs are being absorbed by this grant funding source. Um, we had to um, provide um, housing for public safety employees that may have been exposed, that it wasn't appropriate for them to go home to their families. So those expenses are all being covered by this, um, this as well. So really good news on that. There are a couple of issues that are still being fine tuned. Um, I should have an email back from our contact later tonight. He said he was going to try to get me revised spreadsheet tonight so we could get on the phone first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
So good news there is that um, it's not just one of those things that appears as a maybe or as a potentiality. This is actually money that's going to be transferred to the town to cover those costs, which is great news. Additionally, the um, a lot of the work that Guardian Information Systems has been doing, um, since they've come on board as our IT support, um, has the, has the driving factor behind it, security and directly applicable to remote access and remote participation, whether it's something as generic as the conversion to Office 365, or more specific to how people are allowed into the network, um, to be able to um, remote communicate from, from home. So we will be submitting another version of our application to the state for a good deal of their expenses, which is good news for us, um, because it all does tie back to um, COVID-19 and the ability to have secure systems and facilities and networks for people to, to telecommunicate.
So is that establishing a VPN, basically?
It will. It will. It'll change the way it's been being done, um, which I'd be lying if I said I understand. Um, all I know is that I click on something and I'm in my desktop at my office.
No, it's, it's what every remote company is doing right now. So.
So there are a number of security enhancements being done, but I wanted to report that out. Um, there has been an issue with the website. Don and I spoke about it briefly before the meeting. Um, Wayne, you and I, I believe, spoke about it earlier today. Uh, the company that hosts our website has um, transferred where it is hosted and bumped into an issue with, and again, I'm, I, I start hearing sounds like Charlie Brown teacher on the cartoons and it just, I don't know what they're saying. DNS server and how it was being accessed. And it goes back to Steve Cludier, having had originally created the domain back in the early 2000s and having it still listed in his name. So he's been working with Guardian, very gracious in his time, and just needed confirmation from us in writing that it was okay for him to transfer stuff to them, which is taking place today. So um, those issues are supposed to be being resolved. I know that you guys are talking about the fact that there may be an Internet Explorer issue as well because it's no longer being supported. So uh, Microsoft Edge or Chrome, you wouldn't have difficulties, but if you're trying to come on through Internet Explorer, you may.
Yeah, those are all going bye-bye because Windows isn't supporting those anymore. So either get on Chrome, Firefox, or Edge.
I think there's one other one too, and I can't remember off the top of my head. I think the score is being supported.
Yes.
Budzilla.
That's it, yep.
The um, additional COVID update, um, we've talked a number of times now about the fact that um, as one of the COVID regulations that have been passed at the state level, towns that aren't having their town meeting until after the beginning of the fiscal year are allowed to participate um, in doing a 1/12 budget. And it's not 1/12 legitimately, it's 1/12 plus the things that you pay in bulk on uh, the first month in July, like your retirement assessment or health insurance or um, school assessment, the first quarter, the assessment for the regional dispatch, those things. So uh, Lori has taken the time to create a 1/12 budget. Um, the water department created theirs for their enterprise as well. Um, I was advised today that a vote of the board approving the 1/12 budget, then being submitted to the state tomorrow gets us a check mark next to our name, which makes us able to continue to do business as of July 1st. So the 1/12 budget for the town, taking last year's total budget and pulling out 1/12 of the things that don't have lump sums, is 666,632.81. The one-time expense is a 4,693,221 dollars for a total of 5,359,853.81, which is a total 1/12 plus July payments.
Okay.
So um, this is basically just carrying forward as we currently are. So town meeting has already approved this for last year's expense. We're just being allowed to carry it for a year while we get next year's budget before town meeting.
Can you give me a motion from us?
So a motion to submit a 1/12 plus one-time payments budget of 5,359,853.81 for the general fund.
Give me that number one more time, please.
5,359.
Yep.
853.81. And then I have the water department one as well, Don. I can give you that number is all totaled is, just make sure I'm grabbing the right columns here. 1/12, 1/12, is 863,648. So 863648.
Uh, do you want two separate motions or just one?
One is, one is fine, just listing those to you.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that we approve the 1/12 budget of plus 5,359,853.81 for the town budget and the 1/12 budget for the water department at 863648.
And I'll second that. Any other questions with that?
No. Actually, um, I, I stand corrected. There is a, an additional of the due July 15th in the water budget. So it's an additional 161,766. I can do that total up here if you want it as one number. 14, 11, 14, 5, 12, is 1,025,414 is the water.
So can you amend your?
Um, I make an amend to the water department's uh, 1/12 budget to reflect a, a 1,000,000.
25,000.
25,000,414.
Thank you.
And I'll second the amendment. Questions? Discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
And the last update under the COVID updates is, is a part of the security work that's being done by Guardian, um, they've, they've installed a piece of equipment that they've patented and trademarked called the Guardian Eye. It basically, it's consistently uh, 24/7 surveying the system and it can see any device that's connected to the network. Um, the concern that they have raised is that the water department's systems are connected to the network, yet they don't have any uh, ability to, to manage or control that. So there are two things that they, they can suggest. One is that they pull that plug because they can't, they can't be responsible for our network if they can't control a significant door inward. Um, or if the water department hasn't yet finalized things with their selected vendor, um, consider bringing Guardian on to do that piece as well. But absent a decision on them taking over the water, they need to close that door because there's no security for them because they have an open door that they can't have any control over.
This goes back to what I said before. There, there are a whole bunch of things that go into our IT infrastructure that are managed in different locations by different organizations. Water is going back out for somebody to manage the skater system. Is are they, is that also included in what that company will do?
They can see the skater system right now, yes.
Okay. Yeah, what about the company that, that the water company is looking for to manage their IT? Are they doing just the skater or are they doing the entire infrastructure there?
I'm not aware of whatever this bid proposal is. I've not seen that.
See, that's what we need before we can, before I can feel comfortable telling, well, turning the key off. I need to know what the other company's going to do, where they, where they stop. So if it's just the skater system, that's fine. Then the other, this company needs to take over the other portion of the infrastructure.
Right.
But we need to have these, the water people in the room and talk this out so we understand what the whole thing is.
I, I agree. And the, the, the president or CEO of Guardian wants to come in at your next meeting and give you his, his 30-day on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground assessment of what they've seen, what they found, and what they've done. But this is one that he, he sent me a text message just before the meeting saying he really needs direction on this because they, they can't put their company's name and reputation on.
No.
Being responsible for securing a system that they don't have.
No, I understand that. And, and I would invite him and the water commissioners to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Yeah, and can we do that?
Get this thing hammered out.
Can we do that either next week or in three weeks? Because I'm away the week, week of July.
In between.
Which is two weeks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going anywhere for a while, so.
I know Brad said he can make himself available. So next Tuesday, want to try?
Yeah, just have a quick meeting.
See if you can arrange for the water commissioners?
Yeah.
I don't think we need a full agenda of the meeting, but just to cover that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had for you under COVID updates.
Okay.
Uh, before you move on to the next section, there was one thing, and I didn't see it on here, but it's in my packet. We had the Townsend Library reopening draft?
It wasn't on the agenda and it was actually something that was in the packet as well. So I, because it wasn't on the agenda, I didn't bring it up. Um, I, I don't think there's an issue with bringing it up under COVID updates if you'd like to.
Yeah.
And adopt it. They are separately um, elected, so they have, you know, they have the authority to do this. They're just looking for your kind of stamp of approval. So if you want to take that up, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, if I can get a motion on that, Don.
Um, I make a motion that we take up uh, the Townsend Library reopening draft for.
And I'll second that. I think it was pretty comprehensive as well, the other ones we talked about tonight too. So I'll second that. All those in favor?
Uh, Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Excellent. 5-1 Board of Selectmen Announcements Updates Reports. All I have is, since the top, uh, state has moved into phase 2.2, I guess we're calling it, restaurants are back open. Please support your local restaurant because they've gotten killed in this whole thing. They said, said on the news this morning, at least 30% of the restaurants in the state are not opening ever again. So.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's an important revenue stream for everybody.
For a lot of people.
Yes, so.
And it's just a part of the social fabric, your culture of your communities, to have those places to go and meet and socialize. It's, you know, it's not just about the food intake, it's.
Just selfishly myself, I got to book a vacation for the end of next month that, in Maine, um, to go up there. So.
Right.
Yep.
There, there is um, this issue touches on that to a certain extent. Um, there's a grant opportunity that came up. It's a very quick turnaround. The applications began being accepted yesterday. I was on a conference call today with Weston and Sampson Consultants and Beth, the um, planning assistant, trying to scope out a way that we might be able to avail ourselves of some of these funds to do something that we would probably want to do, but it wouldn't be a priority in terms of what limited funding we have. And it's looking at this back lot, the grass lot that we use for overflow parking. And the grant requires that you have a project that you're able to get in the ground, working on within 30 days. And it has to support commerce, it has to support the ability for people to be outdoors and be able to social distance themselves to get exercise. Um, it has to support um, um, food security. So the idea is, and it's nothing more than a draft and it would go before you for consideration before it were to be submitted, would be to create the parking that we use in this location behind us. Um, in an ecologically friendly way, there are, it's almost like a, a rigid plastic honeycomb that's filled with aggregate. So the water percolates through it. Um, so it's a little more environmentally friendly. Um, to create parking and landscaping with that, to incorporate as a part of the, the, the parking, that it be public parking, not just town hall parking, and that it be available for the likes of any of the businesses within walking distance. So cliffs, for instance, if, you know, if people don't have the ability to park out front because the line's too long here, or if that, God forbid, ever were taken away as an opportunity, we'd have parking here. The ice cream factory, we'd have parking here.
And the rail trail.
Rail trail, even a bigger issue that um, you know, we would have, you know, a lot at the terminus of this end of the rail trail. The um, idea of it being on Saturdays, the possibility of farmer's market, because the master plan, as draft as it is, had contemplated a reinvigorated agricultural commission and having um, a farmer's market. You know, we have a lot of farming in the community and, you know, no farmer's market. So this would be an opportunity to have um, food security touched on in that as well. So when they were looking at that today, they also looked at the connectivity between this lot and the lot that goes off to the trestle, the old rail trestle, right at the corner of um, of Jeff's. And maybe even expanding it out to that location and having green space, um, rail trail parking, and maybe even benches along the top of the, the riverbank for people to, to sit and enjoy the river. So a couple of different things at play here, but it's, it's as recent as just today that that call happened. So I'll have more for you at the next meeting, but.
Yeah, I'll definitely support that. That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, the only other announcement I had is part of our um, piece. I just wanted to remind people that, two things. June 25th at 7 o'clock, the water department's having their rate increase.
Yeah.
Public hearing call remotely. So I encourage town people that have questions or concerns to call into that and voice their opinion because this is the only shot you got. And second, our election is next.
Monday.
Monday. Um.
Yes.
So I don't know what the deadline is for absentee ballot.
Goodness, I think.
Yeah, and that goes back to the problem with our, our website, that people weren't able to get and pull down the form.
Correct, but Kathy, you can email her and she can, and she can email to you. That's what I did. Um, or as she's been doing, if you.
And, and the same goes with uh, the, the water folks. They tried to um, put the presentation on the website and were unable to get it up.
Okay, so if, if you can help get that done tomorrow.
Absolutely. That's all part of the discussion we had about the website earlier.
Okay.
That's all part of the discussion we had about the website earlier in the meeting.
So that's all I had, Don. Did you have any?
No, I didn't have anything more today.
5-2 approved many meeting minutes. I don't have any to review.
Nope.
We need to catch up on that, however, so. We make that a priority for.
Absolutely, yep. I'll see what ones Carolyn's got drafts of, and we'll get them before you.
Okay. 5-3 approve assigned payroll and bills payable warrants. Can I get a motion there, Don?
I make a motion that we sign and approve and sign payroll and bill payable warrants out of session.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Number 6, executive session. Can I get a motion there, Don?
I make a motion that we go into an executive session pursuant to. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to. Conduct collective bargaining sessions on our contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Reference town administrator, fire chief, and police chief, and we will not be returning to open session.
Actually, if I may, if I may. To return to open session for the possibility of execution. So with, with one of those in particular, there would be the need to come out and have an affirmative vote in public to execute.
Okay.
Adjourn back to open session.
Adjourn back to open session.
Yeah, I'll second as amended, so. Roll call vote, please.
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Hartley, thanks. You can shut us off.
We all set?
We're coming out of executive session, back into open session. We have one item to affirm. Can I get a motion, Don, please?
I make a motion that we approve the employment contract between the town of Townsend and Police Chief James P. Artell.
And I will second that. Any further questions, discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn at 7:52.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Hartley. We're all set.